Meeting of the Ashkast County Council. If the clerk will please take the role.
Hanson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Bojehowski.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Mugerauer.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Present six.
All right. I'll take care of the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing on the agenda tonight is the public hearing for the 2022 city budget. Procedurally, city clerk, it's the public hearings open and then it's really not an open and close type thing, it's just these citizens can come speak to us.
That is correct.
Sounds good.
And I have no one registered.
And Deputy Mayor Mugerauer, in the past, Mr. Van Gopler, the Finance Director, has given a brief overview, usually before public input, but since there's nobody here for public input, we can make a presentation. It's going to be very brief, whenever you want, primarily for the public who may be viewing or who may be viewing on TV or through streaming services. But Mr. Van Gopler has a brief presentation, so at your pleasure, we'll do that.
No, if the Finance Director wants to take it away now, that'd be more than appropriate.
Great. So all we need to do is get this popped up, if you can get that on the screen real quick. So we're here tonight to talk about the 2022 annual operating budget. This is the public hearing portion of that budget, of our budget process.
Come here. Move it for you.
I got it. I'm here, but do it this hard way.
Fitz, let's be honest, you're not going to be able to solve this.
All right.
Want me to do it?
We had it before. You got it, huh?
There's a joke in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Waiting for it for.
We really did do this before the meeting.
Yeah.
There we go.
There we go.
There you go. So basically what we do is just give you a snapshot of the budget itself. This is the source of all our different funds. This is a big overview of all the funds. So we've got general fund, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and this is where the money's coming from. Most of it to general operational revenue, 33%, enterprise at 34%. The use of the funds is pretty much going out to the general fund expenditures. We've got debt service expenditures. Enterprise funds has a huge chunk of the pie. So this is kind of giving an illustration of where the money's going out to. Specifically, when we start talking about operations, we talk about the general fund. The general fund accounts for all the departmental activities that are funded through the use of a tax levy, and the tax, property tax levy accounts for about 48% of the revenue coming in. Intergovernmental revenue sources is about 30 some percent, and then you can see the other parts of what makes up our revenue pie. If you're looking at the numbers, the general fund total revenue is about $49.5 million. You can see what's how this compares to the previous years. It's important to note that the intergovernmental revenues is only up by $61,000 or .37%. So there's really hardly any change on the intergovernmental revenue. Tax revenue is up about a percent, and the other categories are also noted on there as If I look at a snapshot, or if you look at a snapshot from 2011 to 2021, the 10-year window, and again, some of this is already known, we've talked about this in the past, but the reliance on shared revenue has really gone from 23% down to 20% of the pie. The levy has actually increased from about 14% of our pie in the general fund to 40 some percent, and other revenue makes up about a third. So that's just a quick snapshot from 10 years ago to today. On the expenditure side of things, public safety is our biggest expenditure, not a lot of surprise there. General government, public works, transportation, or the other portions as well. Okay, sorry. Going to the expenditure side of, on the number side, the big thing here is in 2021, we had indirect labor. That was the contingency set aside for contracted settlements at the time we did the budget in 2021. We did not have the dollar amounts known, or the negotiations were not final. As we go into 2022, those are all within the department, so instead of being in that 62 category, they're up in the 61 category. So some of that huge increase in line section for direct labor includes already known wage adjustments for 2022. If you're looking at general fund revenue and subtract the expenditures, the difference at the end of the year goes into what's called fund balance. In private sector, that's owner's equity, but we just keep it classified as fund balance in governmental accounting. This is the history of the fund balance. You can see in the last four or five years, we've had a pretty good increase in our general fund fund balance. As part of our policy on fund balance, the Finance Director is required to give you a presentation of where we're at and where we anticipate to be at on our fund balance. The numbers show that about $15 million in fund balance at the end of 2020. At the end of 2021, we're estimating it to be about $18 million. And you can see that based on our policy, right now, our maximum fund balance is 14.8. So we're above that, and we've talked about using some of the fund balance for other projects, and that requires a separate council action at some point in time, and we've talked about some of those in the past. If you look at the actual tax levy that's being part of this budget, most of the tax levy is geared for general government services. About 50% of the levy goes to the general fund. A large portion of our levy goes to debt service. And then we also have levy going to the other services that we provide that are supported by tax levy services, and they're there as well. So you can see the allocation on that pie. The tax levy chart itself is up there. This includes the budget enhancements that the council approved at the October meeting, so that's already been incorporated into that levy number. Right now, the levy stands at an increase of 4.26%. And you can see the changes from the previous year on that graph as well, or on that chart.
4.62, right?
4.62, I'm sorry, I missed smoke. So not only that, yeah, so you can see that the changes for the various levy amounts. If you look at the valuation, the thing I wanted to call to your attention on the valuation is that our equalized value is increasing at a faster pace. The equalized value measures property based on its market value. We spread taxes on our assessed value. The assessed valuation is determined by the assessor, and normally, you'd want to stay within 10% of market value. You can see that we're falling below 10%. We're actually at 82.87% with our assessed, to equalize ratio as we move forward. And then the other thing to note is that the levy increase is, the rate increase is 4.19. So while you had a 4.62% increase in the levy, the rate's going up 4.19%, so it's a little bit less than the levy itself, because there is some growth in the assessed valuation. Right now, the assessed valuation is a revised estimate. We got a final number from the state of Wisconsin, but it hasn't been adjusted for the tax increment district, so I had to make a manual adjustment to come up with that assessed valuation of $3.7 billion. So that's my calculation at this point in time. The interesting thing to note, and I don't think I've shown this before, is the change in the equalized rate versus the assessed rate. And again, the equalized value is the true market value of property, but we're spreading taxes on the assessed value, and you can see that the equalized rate is actually going down, but the assessed rate is going up, and that gap is widening as we go forward, because our ratio of assessed equalized is expanding. But when you put it into the rate perspective, this kind of shows a little bit more on how that's happening with our rates. So one thing I wanted to show, and I've done this a number of years, is I've taken the taxes on a $150,000 house, and I divided it by 12 to come up to a monthly payment for city services. This is just city-only services. So a $150,000 house pays $145.10 in 2022 for city services. So when you talk to constituents, or when residents are looking at this, you have to ask yourself, you know, are we getting value for our $145 a month payment? And you can put that in relationship to some of the other payments you make on a monthly basis, whether it's, you know, a cable bill, or utilities, or something else. And then I divided our share into the various components. The scary part is, of that $42 a month is going for debt service. So that's a little bit different, and quite a bit amount of money for debt. But if you look on the operational side, police and fire, public safety is our biggest expenditure, so you're paying about $22 a month for police services, and $20 a month for fire services, and then I have all the other categories listed as well on there. So I'd like to close with just that particular snapshot, to kind of show what are the costs for services will be in 2022. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you might have, or if I need to expand on any of the slides or information.
Real quick, so the debt service, just for the public, I mean, that's paying for infrastructure, primarily?
Correct. Correct. And that's the amount of money that we have to, you know, we have as far as a tax levy that's dedicated for debt service. As council borrows money, you make an obligation to have a future levy to repay that debt. It's like a mortgage on a house, where you have principal and interest payment, and this is a combination of all our principal and interest payments that are supported by tax levy.
Okay, so if a resident went through the CIP, they get an idea of what they're paying for?
Correct. And part of the resolution that you'll be considering next week is the fund to 2022 capital projects. This number represents previous capital projects that previous councils said we're going to issue debt for, and this is 2022's payment of principal and interest payments.
Thank you.
Russ, can you give, for everybody at home watching this, if they don't have anything better to do, certainly, but can you give them a history of our debt service and where we're taking our debt, maybe in the last two or three years, just briefly touch upon it, that the council is well aware of the debt service is too high compared to our peers, as well as what a great job the Long Range Finance Committee is doing in tackling this? So.
Yeah, one of the measurements, and one of the actually statutory requirements, is a community is limited how much debt they can issue by its valuation. And the state limits you to 5% of your equalized valuation. And with that measurement then, is we look at how close we are to that maximum, and so the Long Range Finance has stated that the goal is to stay at about 50% of that maximum, or 2.5% of our equalized valuation. When I first started, like, three years ago, we were about 70% of that maximum amount, and with our estimate right now, we're bringing that down to just a tick over 50%. And with an estimate that that'll be below 50% potentially next year, even with the borrowing that council's going to consider as part of the financing for the 2022 projects next week at the city council meeting.
So I mean, in summary, we're making great strides in reducing that debt. Is that accurate?
Very, that's a very accurate statement, and I think it's something that Long Range Finance and the city council has suggested that we want to incorporate as a community and organization, and we're doing everything we can to kind of watch that in looking at our recommendation for future debt issuance. We actually have benefited from the increase in the equalized value, but that's basically a measurement that the state allows you to issue debt towards, so we're just using that as kind of a goal.
Thank you very much.
Finance Director Van Gopler, one of the other things that, over the last couple of years, I think since you've came on board, we've made a little bit more of a shift towards, or at least a more concerted effort, towards doing 10-year notes as compared to 20, so that some of those, the debt payments, they're going to be a little bit higher in the near term, but we're also saving the taxpayers on the interest savings, of course, as well.
Yeah, one of the things we've tried to do is try to match the financing to the asset life. As best we can, even if assets are going out more than 20 years, you know, a road should be able to last, you know, 40 or 50 years, depending on its road construction and type. But we try to issue the debt for 20 years, and we even have been pushing to retire that debt sooner. What that does is just allows us more flexibility in the future.
No. And one other thing I know, having gone through it a couple of times, the last slide you had, where it breaks down the monthly cost per department, don't need to put it back up, but that's been a nice addition. I think it's a helpful tool. It shows, it's a relative comparison for people at home when they see that tax bill. Nobody enjoys getting the city's Christmas card every early December, but it's, you know, it's the taxes are the price we pay to live in a civilized society, but to break it out in terms of, you know, its public safety, and its public works, and its trash collection, to give them, you know, a real example of when they're comparing it, like you said, to their cellphone and the internet bill and mortgage, the value that we're providing. So I like that tool.
Yes, yes. The other thing that I think, from an educational standpoint, and we've been trying to promote this, is the fact that while we send out tax bills, we send out tax bills for levies that include the school district, the county, and the technical schools. So people get a sticker shock when they see the tax bill which covers multiple governmental entities, and this is just the city's portion. So, you know, you as city council are responsible for providing funding for city services and adopting a levy for city services, and that's part of this budget process, and that reflects the cost of city services only.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Well, then, the public hearing for the 2022 budget is closed, and we can move on to the council workshop. The next thing on the agenda, giving direction to staff in preparation of the 2022 budget and CIP for the November 9, 2021 council meeting. Last, I do want to say a big thank you to all council members for last meeting. It was a little bit longer, and it was a little bit out of the norm for what we had done in the past in terms of process, but it was very beneficial, I think, for all of us, as well as, more importantly, I think it was very beneficial for staff. They knew pretty clear where we wanted to go coming out of last week's meeting. So just wanted to say thank you for council, for putting in that effort and going through the process.
So Mr. Mugerauer, Russ is going to be putting up on the screen kind of where we stand at this time, based on the direction the council gave us at the last meeting. Russ, it's just going to be up on the screen for everybody to see. So what he is showing here, before he gets back to the microphone, is the ones that the enhancement packages that impacted the levy. What those are, there were three that were approved by council, then there were some others proposed of contingency, use of contingency, and then other ones that were either not approved or had not been discussed at all. So we've left everything on the sheet, just categorized it a little differently based on the direction we have so far. So as Mr. Van Gopler said, we're standing at a levy increase of approximately 4.2%, and that's kind of where we're at. And really, it's a matter of, are there any other questions or changes that the council wants to discuss now before we present you for final approval next Tuesday? You're always, you always have the ability to change it next Tuesday, but when you do it at the very last minute, the margin for error is significant. So if we can get it addressed now, then when it's before you, it's ready for approval. I will say, you know, this is more for the public than for the council. This is council's sixth budget workshop, so, and that doesn't include what you referred to, Mr. Mugerauer, last week, a nearly two-hour discussion that wasn't itemized as a workshop, but, boy, it walked and talked just like a workshop. So the council has already met, this is the seventh time councils met to discuss the budget, which I think is a testament, because next week, it's going to almost look anticlimactic, but in reality, you've been working on this, you know, for quite a while now. So with that, you know, we're available to answer any questions. There are department heads available to answer questions, and we're available to help you through the last step of the process. Russ, anything you want to walk them through?
No, I think you kind of covered everything. That the top block is the items that were approved on October 26. There was a couple of them that were not approved, and we're waiting for any discussion or suggestions if you want to consider any further enhancements. But as I stated in my presentation, the levy's at 4.62% increase right now, and we were given direction to come in at about 4.5.
Appreciate it. Madam Mayor first, and then Councilmember Miller.
Just a question about that. Russ, the box over to the right on the enhancement sheet, enhancement offered by action taken. What is that referencing? I don't see anything specifically. Is that for after the fact?
I'm not exactly sure of your question.
I think she's referring, are you referring to the box that says enhancement offered by action taken?
Yes.
In the ones that were not approved? There's, the far right column shows the various enhancements that were approved by council. Three that were approved, it actually shows five. Those were approved, and then there were two others that were not approved, and the other ones blank means the council took no action, gave us no direction. That's not unusual, but we're just pointing those out. Russ, maybe, unless the mayor has another question, pop that up on the screen for everybody to see. It's, I think she's referring to the ones here.
I think I know.
Can you get that back up there, Jake? There we go.
Do we need to make that a little bit bigger?
So the box to the right in the middle, enhancement offered by action taken, it says not approved 10/26. Is that, what is that specifically referring to, the table to the left?
Yes, it is. There was a motion to create a fire chief, assistant fire chief, or fire chief of support services. That motion failed, so it was not approved. And then the motion on the, started out at 50,000, I think it was amended to 20,000. That was also council action on October 26 that did not pass.
The reason there's a big blank space between the two is because there's no action taken by the council. It doesn't have a cumulative impact, and that's what those blank areas are for. So Mr. Van Gopler took those out.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. You know, it's a tough pill to swallow when you're sitting at home, and, you know, we're raising your taxes 4.6% and everything, but after, how many meetings have we had? Seven, eight, nine meetings? A million emails and conversations? These jobs are needed. These positions need to be filled. I don't want to pay any more tax than I have to. I think everybody understands that. But when you've got these mandates coming down from the state, from the feds, from the DNR, we don't have a choice. We don't have the staff for this stuff. With that being said, and talking out of both sides of my mouth, I'm going to ask that we reevaluate and add the Parks Arborist position. I just think we're putting too much workload on the parks. They keep getting thrown projects, specifically the roundabouts, things like that, and we don't have any staff for it. So I'd like us to reevaluate that one position, maybe.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, can I just have a quick point of clarification? If you'll notice on the top chart, the Arborist was approved.
Oh.
And if you were talking about the zoo specialist, that's great, but I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
You're absolutely right.
The Arborist was approved, but the zoo specialist was not.
And I apologize, the zoo specialist. So I'd like us to look at that and maybe discuss that. I am for adding that position, and I just think we keep killing the Parks Department. They had zero summertime help, because I don't think we're competitive with our wages, which is something we can address next year, but I think they're in desperate need of that position, and I think it warrants a second look.
Would you like to make a motion to?
I would like to make a motion that we add the zoo specialist as an enhancement, and however you want to word that, Pam.
So number 12, just for clarification, number 12 on the list shows zoo specialist, 50% funding, so a half-year position.
Correct.
Perfect.
Correct. And my apologies, I don't have my iPad, our IT director is unsabotaging it for me, because I think we all know, I don't know how to operate it very well, but he certainly did an amazing job, so here it comes. Thank you very much.
Well, there's a motion on the floor from Mr. Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
I think there's a point of clarification. We just want.
Well, let me just add a few comments on that, because I certainly understand the motion and the precedent. One suggestion that I offered to council for their consideration is that right now, if you were to go back to the budget enhancement spreadsheet, I would just like to point out that we have a proposed contingency. Within that proposed contingency is a reserve of $32,000 for 50% funding of that zoo specialist position. So if you're really adamant about the zoo specialist, if you left it as that, we could come back at some future point in time and move it out of the contingency and into the appropriation without impacting the levy for 2022. But there would be an impact to the levy for 2023. I'm giving that to you as an option to consider to not adjust the levy in 2022, and you could still create the position and fund the position as it's shown right now at 50%, and you could make that 100% if you wanted to, but in reality, there's going to be some lead time in getting everything in place. So I would just offer for consideration that you could do that without adjusting the levy in 2022.
I'd like to hear Mr. Ford's thoughts on that.
Oh, just hit the button.
Yep. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, well, I guess my question, maybe this is, I don't know if this is for staff, this is for you, Councilman Miller, but so this position specifically is tied to this new bear exhibit, correct?
No, I don't think it is. Maybe Ray wants to address that. I don't think it's exhibit-specific. That's my understanding. I think they're just in desperate need.
Councilmember Ford, it was my understanding from the workshop that the rationale was because of multiple new exhibits.
because of multiple new exhibits, but perhaps Mr. Mauer could speak to that.
Mr. Mauer?
Yes, we, as I, when we went through the budget hearings, over the past five years, we've added the new eagle exhibit, which the training of that animal or that bird is very time-consuming. So we need to make sure, make sure that we're still paying attention to the other animals, providing the education. We've added the otter exhibit probably seven years ago. The bear exhibit, yes, that we're contemplating would be additional. We have added, we recently purchased within the last year and a half and have in our own inventory fox and badger and a few other smaller mammals that we maintain year-round. So the zoo continues to grow. I think the zoo has great support from the many donors annually, but also for most of the exhibits. I would say the exhibits that we added the last five to seven years, I believe have all been donations for those, but it comes down to staffing at this point to make sure that we can continue to maintain and treat the animals and care for them.
Okay. I asked the question because always trying to match funding sources is what it's actually going to do. So, you know, with the 50% position, the assumption there is you wouldn't be anybody you would hire until halfway through the year anyways. And if there's further delays or if there's any uncertainty, then I would be comfortable doing it with contingency because it's kind of dependent on it actually, the need being there. Whereas if we are sure the need is there today, I mean, I think the tax levy would make more sense as a proposal.
Yeah, and I guess I can echo what's been said. Seasonal staff, we hire seasonal staff at the zoo as well, and that has been very difficult as well this past year. So we do have a number of overtime hours that we're expanding because it is a 24/7 operation as well. We do have to staff it on weekends, and on weekends, it does need to be full-time staff for some of the care of those animals.
So as proposed right now, at least as presented, number 12 was proposed by city staff to use contingency funding. So if, if approved as is, it would be using contingency unless council chose otherwise.
Normally, I would be a little bit opposed to this, but I think the way that we've got it structured, I think it's a benefit to the zoo and to the taxpayer. So I'm okay in this one instance going with staff's recommendation.
Just to give, I guess, a final thought on it would be, I echo Councilmember Miller's concerns about, you know, normally, you know, making sure things are fully funded and, and accounted for. This still is. This isn't us using undesignated funds or general fund revenues as a one-time, you know, Band-Aid. This is still us using levy dollars for an expense. So I'm okay with this personally, the, the amount coming out of contingency. And I'll support the, the recommendation or the, the motion, so.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if the clerk will take the roll on enhancement number 12, zoo specialist at 50%?
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muegerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
No.
Carrie, 5-1.
Any other, any other suggestions or discussion or direction to staff? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Miller's going to motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Sorry, I thought I was seconding.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at 5:37.